Thank you for being here tonight. We're here for a city council meeting and it is Monday, December 5th, 2022. We'll start this meeting with a roll call and determination of quorum.
Nordstrom.
Here.
Solomon.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Strowman.
Here.
Armstrong.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Hamm.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Roseland.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is the invocation and tonight we'll hear from Pastor Craig Moore. Following the invitation will be the pledge of allegiance.
Our hearts and our minds bless our mayor and each of our city council members. May they have a spirit of wisdom and understanding that comes from you. Help us, Lord, to do the right things. May they have a spirit of discernment and a spirit of compassion and a spirit of truth. May our government function in a way, Lord, that pleases our, that blesses our citizens. Lord, bless all of our law enforcement officers, our firefighters. Keep them safe, give them wisdom and discernment. Bless all of our first responders and help them to be able to do their jobs with excellence. Keep them safe and give them health and strength, wisdom and discernment. Lord, bless our school board, our administrators, our teachers, all those who teach our children and our young people. May they influence our students in ways that are pleasing to you and that cause them to live healthy, productive lives that benefit others. Lord, bless the business communities of our community. May our businesses in our community thrive. May our economy thrive and be blessed by God. Lord, bless the churches, the charitable organizations of this city. May they be a blessing to our people, meet the needs and make a big impact for good in this city with a message of the gospel and with hope and peace. God bless this city with love, joy, hope, peace, courage and creativity. Help us to be a shining example of what a city dedicated to God really looks like. In Jesus' name, amen. God bless you and Merry Christmas.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Now for the adoption of the agenda. This is the point in the meeting where the council may adopt the agenda as written or make certain alterations to it. Will there be a motion? Motion to approve the agenda by Pat Jones and a second by Jason Solomon. All in favor of approving that agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Tonight, item one on the agenda is an award. I'll call on the Rapid City Sustainability Committee Chair Alan Anderson to come up and also the members, whoever you'd like to bring, and also the members of Youth and Family Services.
I'm Patricia Scarborough, member of the Sustainability Committee. We are honored tonight to present the Youth and Family Services Garden Education Project with a Sustainability Award. This award is presented several times a year to different businesses, organizations or individuals that contribute to the sustainability of our community. The project, which began in 2014, aims to provide garden education and food access to youth and families enrolled in YFS programs. They teach community-based, hands-on classes to youth year-round, from preschool through high school. They utilize raised beds gardens, vermiculture, fruit trees, a pollinator garden, as well as hydroponics and aquaponics systems, designed and built by the School of Mines students. Their locations include Fullerton Farm in Box Elder, an indoor garden center at their East Adams Street facility, as well as raised bed gardens at three different sites. These growing locations allow them to cultivate vegetables and herbs for distribution to YFS kitchens and directly to families. The program, in the words of the director, "recognizes that food is a basic human need. Sharing food brings people together and healthy food can transform one's physical, mental and emotional health." The vision of YFS's Garden Education Project is that children and their families will become active participants in their local food system, gaining the passion, knowledge and skills necessary to thrive as individuals and as a community now and far into the future. Our committee defines sustainability as meeting the needs of the present without compromising the ability of future generations to meet their own needs. It is the place where not only environmental, but also social and economic concerns are all in sync. We believe that this YFS program is a prime example of sustainability and we are proud to have this program in Rapid City. Accepting the award is Gabby De Mars, Garden Education Specialist, and several youth who participate in the program.
Thank you for this recognition and I'm super grateful to all of the kids and the community for showing up today.
Well, that was nice. Next on the agenda is general public comment. This is a time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the city council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at this meeting on any issue not on the agenda, except by placement on the agenda by unanimous vote of the council members present. So we have some speaker request forms here for general public comment and each of these speakers get up to three minutes to speak. And you can watch these lights up here, they're like traffic lights. Hopefully, everyone knows that red means stop. And I'll just call them, call them out. Our first speaker, Bill Young.
Thank you, Mayor Allender and council. I've sent each one of you an email today talking about our concerns with the situation with the low water flows on Rapid Creek. On the 29th of November, the creek at the gauge that I usually look at was running at 32 cubic feet per second. At its low point, it was down below one cubic foot per second. Simply unsustainable for the trout in Rapid Creek, especially the brown trout that are right now on their spawning reds. Many of those spawning reds are now dry. The likelihood for a fish kill is almost certain. Somebody with more knowledge of fisheries would have to confirm that. But I think that the main point is if Rapid City owns 85% of that water, we should have much more control over those water flows coming down from Pactola. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I too would also like to reiterate what my friend Bill Young just mentioned, is the low flows down Rapid Creek right now. Last Wednesday, the Bureau of Reclamation decided that apparently they needed to do some maintenance and they went ahead and what appears to be arbitrarily, I'm sure they had a good plan, but seemed to, from our perspective, arbitrarily shut that water off. It appears that there was no communication with their stakeholders as to what that might mean. Biologists that might have been able to better inform their actions as to what happened in the creek. Rapid City owns 80% plus of the water that is in Pactola. I would think that we would want to consider that to be an important thing that we want to pay attention to as a city. And this low water flow is a threat to our fishery. It's a threat to our town for that kind of thing, but also I think that this is indicative of other threats to our water that we have in the Black Hills. And if we're not paying attention to the potential for a fish kill, what else are we missing as a city? Because that water does in fact belong to all of us. We do have the water rights to that. Right now, as it was mentioned before, those water flows dropped to .97 cubic feet per second on Sunday morning. You could easily walk across the creek at Brayburn Park. That's 1/30th of what it should be flowing at on Sunday morning. And I'm going to bet that those trout are not going to fare very well. But again, I think that as important as this is, water quality of this town and the fact that we do in fact own that much water rights, we need to be paying much, much closer attention to what's happening in our environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is-
And a follow-up. How many people here are concerned about our water quality and are here specifically tonight for that issue? All right, thank you.
Next up is Scott Kenner.
Thank you, Mayor. I've learned a little bit more that it's a maintenance issue and back about 15, 20 years ago, they built the structure at the stealing basin to actually enable maintenance to go on. So the communication thing here is really important because doing this maintenance at this time, specifically at the tail end of spawning and with the eggs in the base, they are frozen and there will be a loss of hundreds to possibly thousands of fish due to this low release. So really understanding why they had to do the maintenance at this time with a plan for maintenance is important. Also, in the Fonzie, seven CFS is the absolute minimum that they're supposed to release. So based on the records, they released less than their legal limit. Now stepping beyond that, which was also mentioned, what is the long-term here? We've showed that through studies done by the School of Mines with the Game and Fish, also with the Bureau of Rec as a partner, 30 to 35 is the optimum maintenance of the fishery during low flow. And as soon as you start dropping from like 30 to the seven or such, we lost 60% of the habitat in the creek. Now just think about your home and reducing it 60% in an instant makes a huge impact on what you can do. Second is, we did do operational studies on Pactola and Deerfield. They were preliminary, but we used recognized national-level operational models. We worked with the Bureau of Rec, the Game and Fish, talked with the city and showed through several alternatives that integrating Deerfield and Pactola, and the Bureau does a good job, but they have a spreadsheet model. There are excellent tools out there and we showed that we could reduce potentially the free release of water by on the order of 2,000 to 3,000 acre-feet and also maintain a higher flow and just operate it better to provide those. In the Fonzie, there is 6,000 acre-feet. They're supposed to be used for wintertime flows. When they did the Fonzie, they didn't show how they planned to release that. They backed into it and said, "We just, we did release 6,000." But they didn't show that they optimized it for fisheries management or anything like that. So we can take the operation and management of this system in the long-term up to a much higher level.
Thank you.
Have to turn that down a little bit. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. I've had the luxury of being the president of the Black Hills Flyfishers for a number of years because I'm the one that keeps being told I should keep doing that. So here I am to talk about this. And I can't even follow up Dr. Kenner with anything even close to the knowledge he has of the entire Rapid Creek watershed, let alone the Black Hills hydrology. But what I can say pretty bluntly is yesterday, I drove up below Pactola. I knew about this issue on Wednesday night. On Thursday, Hans Stephenson, a great member of our board, owner of Dakota Angler and Outfitter, tried to contact the city, the Bureau of Rec, Game Fish and Parks, to find out what the heck is going on because we see the US Geological Survey stream gauges. As fishermen, we pay close attention to those things. All of a sudden, there it's at 11 and a half cubic feet a second. So we were trying to find out what was going on. No response. Friday, no response. Hans went on vacation. I picked up the torch from there. Saturday, Sunday, no response. I went and took pictures of that up there below the dam yesterday. I could see wrinkled up little trout eggs in the rocks. So there's obviously, we've at least lost a good portion of a year class. And if you're wondering, well, the city put on its Facebook page today a picture of Rapid Creek in town. Well, in town, the creek is flowing 25 cubic feet a second, but to give you a little quick instruction on the hydrology of that, the water comes out of, into the dam or into the reservoir right now at about 15 to 20 CFS up by Silver City, comes into the reservoir, the gate is releasing it at 11.7 right now. That water was at 39 and a half on Wednesday at 9:00 AM. And if you look at the chart, it just dropped by 1/4 that quickly. So then from there, that water wanders downstream, starts to freeze here and there on the north-facing slopes, and then starts to go underground at or near the falling rock area. There are what are called lost zones. So in Dark Canyon, the Magic Canyon area, that flow is literally at almost zero. So when you hear people say under one cubic feet a second, you think of a cubic foot, that flow is almost zero right there. And then it picks up again below Canyon Lake. So if you think, oh, well, it's okay in town, it's not bad in town, it's not optimal, but it's really bad up through there between Canyon Lake and Pactola. And it's a mess. And as city council people, we do have an obligation to manage that far better than we have. So anyway, please take note of that. Please pay closer attention. Not just for that, but I live by High Seega. There's 450 people on one water system taking surface water there by Thunderhead Falls. We've gone through more filters the last three days because of this than normal. That's another part of the issue. It isn't just fish. So anyway, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And next is Everett Hoyt.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I too appear here tonight on behalf of the crown jewel of Rapid City, Canyon Lake and Rapid Creek. They are unique features in this city. And as a member of Black Hills Flyfishers since 1990, I can tell you that we have tried to be good guardians and developers of Rapid Creek. We don't, we aren't able to give introductions to the prior speakers, but I'd like to introduce Scott Kenner to you, and I'm sure most of you know him. He's the former head of the Civil Engineering Department at South Dakota School of Mines and Technology, Dr. Kenner, who knows more about the hydrology and the streams of the Black Hills than any other person. Absolutely the expert on Black Hills hydrology. My concern is that in working with the Bureau of Reclamation over the years and bypass valves and other things where Black Hills Flyfishers contributed $400,000 to $500,000 as a partner in those efforts, we find that coordination between the agencies involved is very difficult. And apparently, I texted this morning to Jake Davis, who used to be the fishery supervisor in Rapid City for this region, now for the state, brilliant young man. He had not been contacted by the Bureau of Reclamation. Coordination, and apparently the city was surprised too, although the city does have a dam tender at Pactola. So I'm frustrated, we're all frustrated, by the lack of coordination and the sort of hands-off policy that's adhered to in that, oh, the city can't control that. That's done by the Bureau of Reclamation and we can't impact that. I want to encourage you to take a more proactive role in the management of this water and the management of the resource. We simply have to, and I think this is an example of why we have to. And Dr. Kenner's department, his graduate students, put together a computer model for discharges, for discharges from Pactola, but that model has just been plain disregarded by the Bureau of Reclamation. So I think there needs to be more cooperation, more coordination, more harmony in the control of this water and the protection of Rapid Creek and Pactola. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, that's all the speaker forms we have for general public comment. So moving on to non-public hearing items. Okay, Jason Solomon.
Thank you. I did want to make sure that we addressed those who came to share their concerns. Thank you. You know, today's been quite an education for me as I started getting wind of what was happening and so I started making phone calls to the city, which led me to the Bureau of Reclamation. And after several attempts, I finally got through to them. And obviously, there's a lot to be learned here. I think the biggest thing to be learned is to use our turn signal and obviously in driving, but also in communication. This was a communication breakdown. What the city did know is what was being done, and that was a decrease to the, to the release of the water. What we didn't know was why. And if we didn't know why, then we didn't know when and who needed to know and how long would it take. And so what we did discover, at least what I discovered, and I welcome Public Works correcting me on anything, but what we discovered, what I discovered from my phone call with the Bureau of Reclamation was a minor repair was needed near the gate where the water is released. It was a concrete, I believe it was a concrete repair. And they would take up to a week or two. So in the meantime, they used a bypass line, which decreased the water flow. That's what happened and that might be fine, except I think that the city and Game Fish and Parks not knowing why this was being done, evidently if this repair was not done, it could lead to a bigger issue, which would require none of us want to see. But I believe that proper communication, what it would have done, if we had have communicated with who needs to know, the city needs to know and Game Fish and Parks needs to know. Game Fish and Parks could have said, "This is a bad time for the spawning of the brown trout at this time." They, because sometimes those repairs do need to be done, I think we all agree, but there's a time to do it. And unless it's an absolute emergency, maybe there was a better season or time to make these repairs. Two, when you do those? When are we doing it? How long is this going to take? So what I urged them, and honestly, they were very cooperative once I got through. Obviously, the lines are very busy today, all of us trying to reach out to them. But I think, yes, they should have communicated better with the city, but I think the city, for our part, should do a better job at asking questions, not just say, "Here's what's going on," but us asking the question, why? Who needs to know? When is it being done? How long is it going to take? And if we ask those questions, I believe they're going to be cooperative and answer them. But being short-staffed and all of that, I believe, has contributed to a kind of an issue today. So communication is a two-way street. I do believe, in addition to taking care of our fish, we obviously have a great deal of concern for our water quality. All of us do. We have a lot at stake in that. And so I think it is important to pay more attention. So I guess I would, for one, say, "I apologize for not knowing this was even happening until after the fact." I wish I would have known, then I could have asked the right questions. So I could sit here and point the finger at the bureau and say they should have communicated, but I think what we ought to do is say we should, as a city, be doing a better job at asking the right questions ourselves. And I do think we play a role in this as well. And if the community notices anything, let us know. Sometimes you don't know unless somebody brings it up. This morning, I didn't wake up knowing anything about this. I'd been out of town over the weekend, but the emails and phone calls started coming in and pictures were sent to me and I was like, whoa, let's find out about this. So I just wanted you to know that the city has heard you, we're listening, we're, I'm learning. I believe the council up here, as best as they know. We don't have authority on this issue, but I think we can have some influence. And I think it begins by having professional dialogue with the various agencies and trying to work together. And if the only thing we can do is yell about it, then so be it. I'd prefer not to. I'd prefer to let's just be professionals, work this out and ask the right questions. So I just wanted to make sure you're heard. Those are the lessons I learned today. I shared that with the council today and I just want to make sure I share it with all of you. Thank you.
Okay, moving on with the agenda. Non-public hearing items, items two through 32. We have no speaker request forms for items two through 25, so we'll not have a public comment period on these items. We'll go to consent items two through 25. The council have any items to pull from consent? If not, could I have a motion? Motion to approve the consent items by Lance Lehman, second by Laura Armstrong. All in favor of approving the consent items, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Non-consent items, 26 through 32. We'll open public comment on those items. We have a few speaker request forms. Same rules apply, three minutes per speaker. And the first one we'll have on item 26 is John Van Beek.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I'm with Ferber Engineering Company. We're the planner or agent for item number 26, which is the rezone of a significant portion of property, 300 acres in northeast Rapid City. My first involvement in this area was actually as the design engineer for a small segment of roadway between Exit 60 and Dias Avenue. And as part of that work for the city, I got the privilege of meeting with Chuck Lean, who was the representative of the landowner, representative of the landowners at the time. And throughout the next 20 years, my involvement both for the city and as, also working with Chuck, his vision for this property in the northeast area of Rapid City is coming to fruition. And we're really excited. Just want to let you know if there are any questions as you're considering this item, I'm here to help out, as well as representatives of the applicant, Dakota storytellers and the landowners themselves. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker request is on item 27, and this is from Garth Wadsworth.
Good evening, council. Garth Wadsworth, Elevate Rapid City.
Garth Wadsworth, Elevate Rapid City. Sorry. So we attended the planning commission meeting for the application for the rezone for a lot off of Camden Avenue, Camden Road. There was a few points that we felt were missed during that discussion. At no point did we look at or consider the future need for housing. So as you know, we've undergone an update to the housing study. We'll have an update for you shortly. We'll be sharing those numbers. But what we can say is that we'll need at least 3,000 new rental units in the next seven years, so by 2030. That's no small undertaking. At least 7,000 total units throughout the region. In the last 12 months, or in the last 12 months, we've seen at least a 10% increase in rents. We've seen a 25% increase in median listing price throughout metro area. It's safe to say that housing is an issue. Obviously, we need to look to every single tool we can when we're trying to invest in housing and help the community, and one of those tools is the low-income housing tax credit. It's a federal program, and the way we can best utilize that is through investments in what we call qualified census tracts, QCTs. We felt that that point was not raised, and it was a missed opportunity to help leverage our federal program. So I've had a conversation with a few of you. As you know, QCTs are a federal designation. The federal government decides where those are based on a set of social and demographic criteria. They don't do any outreach to the cities. They don't call Rapid City and request your input on where we think those QCTs should be. And so really, at the end of the day, it's up to us to adjust our local rules and regulations in order to best leverage those federal programs. So we took a breakdown of current developable land, as in vacant land, within the QCTs, and we broke it out by zoning district. General Commercial is by far the biggest district and accounts for the vast majority of large lots, so any lot over one acre within those qualified census tracts. So the rezone is a request to rezone from General Commercial to Office Commercial Use. I will point out that residential uses are allowed within the General Commercial District. They're just allowed above the ground floor. So really, the question is, do we want to adjust the zoning to allow for residential uses on the ground floor? Any concerns about proximity to major roadways or railroad tracks, and whether or not those are appropriate for residential uses? Quite frankly, not the point. The zoning code allows that, and we could accommodate those uses without any changes right now. So we can safely accommodate those needs, and we could build something, but in order to best leverage those federal income tax credits, we need to make changes. It's incredibly difficult to finance and underwrite those commercial uses on the ground floor. And so we'd just like you to take that all into consideration tonight when you're considering this rezone. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker is on item 27, Ryan Tobin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Ryan Tobin. I represent Elmington Capital, and we currently have the parcels under consideration under contract with the intent of developing affordable housing and workforce community. I specialize in affordable housing and community development. Have done this primarily in Colorado. I am Denver-based, but I grew up here in South Dakota. And being able to find opportunities like this to attract investment to towns that have a need that is such as Garth has underscored here in the conversation, is one of the reasons that we are excited to be here. These opportunities don't last. As towns grow, as neighborhoods prosper, these opportunities then succeed and step back because the qualified census tract changes over time, and so they are time-sensitive. As mentioned earlier in the conversation, we know that there's an opportunity to build housing on this site per the existing zoning. But we also know there's a huge economic base within the area. There's lots of retail, commercial activity, jobs, groceries, all things that are symbolic of where we want to put housing. We want to connect people in these communities to the opportunities that are going to help them prosper. And I wanted to make myself available here, but I also wanted to give you the assurances that we're not just a fly-by-night developer. We are a long-term owner and operator. So I will be a member of the ownership group here and be coming back here and be a voice and a person that can respond to any issues that might come, but ultimately, as we look to develop this, this is the first hurdle for us. We like to collaborate and communicate, and through this zoning ask, we will have other provisions and timeframes by which we can engage the community to seek the outcomes that are envisioned here, so we can learn more from you as the community and as the stakeholders that will be directly vested and ultimately be the beneficiary of this type of outcome that we want to do and to attract this investment to your town. So I want to make myself available for questions as well, and we'd be happy to talk further as you have more discussion around this topic. But thanks for having me.
Thank you. Next speaker is on item 28, Dan Tribby.
Hello again. Just a few things I'd like to touch on before you guys make a very important decision tonight. I know for as long as I've been downtown, we've been truly trying to make downtown a better place for the people of Rapid City. And for the long term, the businesses downtown have been approached by some of you people representing nonprofits or representing the city. So much of the focus in the last few years has been on addiction recovery and just substance abuse. What are we going to do with the homelessness? And we worked on that. I mean, collectively, the people downtown have given a lot of money towards trying to solve these problems. And I guess tonight, probably my biggest problem, and I'm really trying to keep it under control, is the answer to that is, let's add another vice. You know, let's just have another vice to downtown. Regardless of the work that you guys have done, I mean, you've heard this a million times sitting there about what we need to do to address homelessness. What do we need to do to address the substance problems in downtown? Is medical marijuana that big of an issue? I don't think it really is. I don't think the dispensary is that big of an issue today. I think the people that I've been talking to, their biggest concern is what's going to happen when this, when recreational comes in. You know, you can go to dispensary now and say, it don't smell too bad, but they're not selling weed. You know, they're selling gummies, and they're selling oil. But when that, when that changes, and we start selling eight ounces of Kush, or whatever makes you smile, it's going to be a whole different story. And are those same folks at One Heart, or Journey On, or the Hope Center, or any of the other folks that are looking to help fight these same problems that we're ultimately going to end up causing? How are we going to deal with that? You going to still go to those businesses and say, we have one more, one more thing that you guys need to work on? You guys have that decision to make, and it's not going to be one to be made lightly, but I just would like you to look a few years down the road, because the people that are pushing the recreational are going to come back and force, and they've already said they are. So it's not a problem that's going to go away, so consider it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker on item 28, Melissa Wood.
Hello, good evening, council and mayor. My name is Melissa Wood, and I recently opened an art gallery at 914 Main Street in Rapid City just a few months ago. Prior to that, I've been painting downtown at that building. My family owns that building, as well as property on Main and St. Joe, so I have experience downtown. And what I want everyone to think about is what Rapid City marketed the downtown area to be, which was an attraction for families and tourists and good, clean fun. And we're getting back to that, but we've really struggled with the homelessness. We've struggled with alcoholism downtown and panhandling. There was many times I wouldn't let my teen daughter go downtown with her friends anymore because it didn't feel safe, and it's starting to get better. At 914 Main, I'm right on a corner. I've been approached in the parking lot by homeless people at night, and I've been fearful. And so it is getting better, but what my concern is, is we're trying to paint a picture of a beautiful downtown Rapid City, and I decided to take a look at what's happening in other communities. What has their experience been with medical dispensaries? And I have a sheet, it's a fact sheet from the Florida Police Chiefs Association, and in that, it's a medical marijuana, bad-for-your-community fact sheet that they put out. And what I want you to know is that they say, common byproducts related to dispensaries include drug dealing, sales to minors, loitering, heavy vehicle and foot traffic in retail areas, increased noise, robberies of customers near the facilities, and the loss of other commercial businesses that do not want to be located in the vicinity. According to the statistics provided by the city's Department of Safety, Denver recorded 7,000 reported crimes within 1,000 feet of medical dispensaries in the first six months of 2012 and 2013. I'm two doors down. I don't want that. We have a beautiful coffee shop next door. Families come and they have lunch and breakfast. We have a beautiful clothing store next door. I'm concerned about what's going to go on. Further, they talk about a number of California cities with medical marijuana dispensaries. They have experienced increase in crime associated with the dispensaries. Storefront dispensaries have been targets of violent takeover-style robberies. One such robbery occurred in Anaheim and another in San Lurandro, where the owner shot and killed an 18-year-old suspect. I don't want that next door. They've also had an adverse impact on neighborhood businesses, including the loss of businesses as a result of the above-mentioned impacts. The National Association of Assistant United States Attorneys notes that citizens in states that have legalized marijuana for medical use have seen an abuse of the laws, and they have created undesirable and unforeseen effects, including increased violence directed toward the medical dispensary owners and employees, increased burglaries of marijuana at the dispensaries, increased loitering, noises, litter, and property damage, and smoking of marijuana in public areas. So when I call down to the police station because there's a homeless person passed out, it takes a long time for them to come. What will you do when people are smoking pot outside my gallery and no one wants to come and buy a painting from me? How will you help me with that? I just don't think that's the picture we want for downtown Rapid City. If it's a medical marijuana dispensary, why wouldn't they be closer to Highway 16 where all the medical offices are? Wouldn't that be a great place for them? Dispensaries are a destination business. People will go anywhere to get that. So do you really want it downtown? I really don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker on item 28, Mark Bachman.
Good evening, mayor and council. I represent Sealy's and Van Bock's at 910 Main Street. Our wall is connected right to going to be the dispensary, Puffy's. And there's, you know, the, our building is 500 feet from Halle Park. There's Airbnb upstairs. There's Twineland Apartments across the street. There's a federal building across the street. We have great businesses. We have the coffee shop. We have Sealy's. We have Van Bock's. We have Melissa's Art Gallery. We have the Red Wing Shoe Store. And I just don't think we need a Puffy's. We have, in our store, we have $200,000 worth of clothes. I went to, when the planning commission approved this, which I can't believe they approved it, I went to Puffy's over, I went to Good Stuff, which is next to Puffy's. And I don't know if any of you guys have been to Good Stuff, but I went in there, talked to the owner, and I definitely could smell it. He said, walk down this hallway. And it was like I was in Puffy's. And I don't think that would be good for our store. I don't think it'd be good for our clothes. I don't think it'd be good for our customers. I think there's other places to put it. You guys already approved 902 Main Street, so why don't you just leave it in 902 Main Street? The only reason why they want to move it to 910 is because there's no sprinkler system in 902. So it's up to you guys to break a rule that it's close to the park. It's going to ruin our block. I know it's just medical right now, but it will be recreational someday. And I don't think that going forward, in the future and now, we need to have a Puffy's in downtown Rapid City. You guys have already said no to the dispensary in the Wicked Swan, the one, the President's on Main Street and 7th Street. So what's the difference between this one and those? It's still downtown Rapid City. So I would say, please vote against it for the good of Rapid City downtown and for Ray Hillenbrand. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on item 28, Tim Powell.
Good evening, mayor, council. My name is Tim Powell. I've got the Red Wing Shoe Store just a few doors down from this location that we're talking about. I moved to Rapid City and took over the Red Wing Store back in 88. At that time, we were on the 500 block of Main Street, just a couple of blocks away here. When we, it became very obvious that we had outgrown that location, we needed something different. Thankfully, we found a great location on the 900 block of Main Street. We wanted to stay in the downtown area, and we were able to do that. If you go back to 1988, when I came to town, look around at what downtown looked like at that time, and compare that to what we have now. There's a lot of people who have done a lot of work to make downtown Rapid City a better place. I want you to think about that and where we're going, please, when you make your votes on this. Now, why is this Puffy's location trying to move into the location that we're talking about? There's some real advantages in being part of the Central Business District zoning. On the list with the Community Development Newsletter, some of the things that they're looking for, the community development, these places have to have a parking plan. Well, these people, this location is in the Central Business District. They don't have to have a parking plan. That's waived. One of the things on the list is, it can't be close to residential areas. In this case, we've got apartments not only across the street, but directly upstairs from this. But that's being waived because we're in the Central Business District. One of the things on their list is trash control. It's my understanding that there are none of the businesses in this building have a trash dumpster. Why? Because there's nowhere to put it. The, the building is built setback to setback because it's allowed in the Central Business District. When you talk about odor control, I don't know, there's an outside sidewalk cafe within a couple of feet of the front door of this place. I realize that you guys have to make decisions on what the criteria that's put in front of you, but this location is getting around a lot of things because of the zoning. I would appreciate it if you would not let them get around the regulation on proximity to the parks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next on item 28, Kit Jeffries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just to start off, I appreciate all the hard work that went into putting, getting the cannabis ordinance into effect. I would like to just touch on the previous speaker and one of the comments that he made was about, our existing license is two doors down from this proposed location. It's in a green zone property, which means it doesn't come before city council. There's no opportunity for There's no opportunity for anybody from the public to have this type of discourse where we talk about it. So just to start with that type of piece, those were approved parking plans, approved odor control plans, exact same thing that we have sent to Planning Commission for the 910 Main Street that was also approved. And just to be honest, we want to be good neighbors. We want to continue that reputation that Puffy's has of being good neighbors. I talked to Good Stuff as well. I believe he turned in a letter to you guys explaining some of the pieces that he looks at when looking for different tenants. Honestly, we wouldn't be here tonight if it wasn't for a four-foot corner the size of this podium that is conditional use permit. It would be, again, a green zone property where we wouldn't be able to have this type of discourse. It just all falls under the conditional use permit, medical cannabis zoning rules. So just a couple pieces. We've been operating for months now and had zero problems that have ever been stated about any of the crime or anything like that. Our average age of our patients is 48 years old. I know for a fact that some of our patients actually shop at some of these other businesses downtown, so they've talked about it, in the same way that they shop at Good Stuff. They're the Essential Oils Building at our current operating business that we have at 2120 West Main Street. Downtown, there are dozens of malt beverage license, liquor license, video lottery licenses, all a part of the family-friendly district. From our odor control plan, we've learned from other states, not only in our existing license do we have an odor control plan, we go above and beyond. We do extra construction with our materials. We have carbon filters. We have Savinox tech that sits within the ducting that is a UV light that kills any and all odor that's emanated from the exhaust vent of that building. Our waste at the dispensaries is less than seven grams, just about a handful a month. It's nonexistent, mainly comes from cultivation manufacturing is where you'll get that waste. In the security, we have cameras, panic buttons, cops. We accidentally pressed one of those panic buttons one time. Cops were there within a minute. The federal building always has constant patrols all over to enhance the security of that area. And there are several other locations moving east across from 910 Main Street that ultimately are green zone where we wouldn't be in front of you guys today that are viable as well. At the beginning of this City Council meeting, the good pastor talked about doing good for the community. This is still medical cannabis. This is helping patients. I believe that this falls in what the good pastor talked about and still doing good for our community. My name's Kit Jeffries. I'll be around for any questions. Thank you.
And the last speaker on item 28, Josiah LaFrance.
Mr. Mayor and Council, my name is Josiah LaFrance. I'm the owner of the building at 910 Main. I wanted to touch on a couple of things in regards to this proposal here and why we're here. I want to reassure everybody that that building has just been renovated, so it's got state-of-the-art HVAC, brand new. The dumpsters on the side out back are shared with the tenant next door. There is a garbage situation there that is just fine. I pay half of that, so I'm well aware of it. As far as, you know, as mentioned, there's apartments above. They are Airbnbs. I am the one who directly profits from those, so if anybody's taking any sort of a risk at losing profit, that would be me, and I'm totally fine with it. I believe that Puffy's is a very professional organization. Everything they do is above and beyond. I can't say enough good things about them. It's about where I'm at. I stand completely in solidarity with them, and I'll be here for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And next speaker is on item 30, Julie Laurenti.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. I just have a quick question on the rezoning of the Lot 1 and 2, Block 5 of Diamond Ridge subdivision. I am one of the residents that's within 250 feet of that, and I know it's moving from agriculture to residential rezoning. And my question is, are they planning on building residential housing there, or will it be another one of those multi-level apartment complexes that are going, it's going up?
Let's see if Vicky Fisher has an answer for that.
If I might ask a question back, you said item 30, which is a plat, and you're speaking to a rezone?
Yes.
Our resident, our resident Realtor up here has chimed in, says he knows the answer.
It is single-family residential development, am I correct, resident Realtor? Thank you. The plat supports that, so your timing is perfect that you're asking it in relationship to the plat, because it actually lays out the proposed lot lines, and they would support single-family residential. There won't be any surprises down the road. They wouldn't support multifamily.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. And that's the end of our public comment period on these items. And so now we'll get on with the agenda, starting under ordinances with item 26. Item 26 is first reading of Ordinance 6543 and Ordinance Amending Section 17.06 of Chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by Ferber Engineering for Dakota Storytellers LLC for a planned unit development zoning district and to authorize the mayor, community development director, and public works director to sign the PUD zone document for property generally described as being located east of North LaCrosse Street and north of Mall Drive. Okay, moving for approval is Pat Jones. Second was Greg Strowman. We'll go to John Roberts.
Thank you. That's why I got in the queue. I was going to make the motion to approve this, but since it's already been made, I do want to make a couple of comments. I think that this is great, listening to the Planning Commission, that at least half the staff was very much in favor of this. I think that we need to look outside the box more on things like this. I'm going to support this. Rapid City, we've been talking about affordable housing for a long time, but we've done very little about it, so it's about time that we start stepping up and doing more. Oh dang it! I'm... Yeah!
That's what you get for pointing out all of my mistakes, John.
I didn't say it was your mistake.
Not this time.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Okay, we'll save that speech for the next item. How about that? Community planning.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the minute Councilman Roberts said half a staff, I knew he was on the wrong item. All of staff was sincerely behind the item known as 22PD031. This is 300 acres of entertainment and housing, and laid out beautifully according to good planning logistics. There has been an intense traffic impact study, and there has been a lot of outreach to the neighboring properties, and we will continue to keep them involved in the process. In my 28 years of working for the city, this is probably the most exciting project that I've ever gotten to review. I didn't want to miss the opportunity to say that, so thank you.
Anyone want to speak on item 26? John Roberts.
Just because I was out of order doesn't mean I didn't want to speak on this one, too. I'm very excited about this. More than likely, this is going to be in my ward, in Ward 4. We've needed to do something in that area for a long, long time. I think it's a perfect area for this, right off the interstate. I think this is going to be fantastic for the city of Rapid City. It's going to bring a tremendous amount more tourists into Rapid, but also it's going to bring a lot of jobs and housing, and it's just a huge project that we've needed in Rapid City for a long time. So I am looking forward to this. You've got my support 100% behind this project. I think it's going to be a great thing. I really pray it comes to fruition. I think it'd be wonderful for the city of Rapid City. Thank you.
Pat Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the thing that excited me the most about it was the emphasis on actually providing housing on-site there for your employees and as this moves forward. I mean, that is such a brilliant idea. The whole project is brilliant, and, and the things that the Lean family has done to Rapid City over the years have been countless and wonderful. But this project is so exciting, and it's going to take Rapid City to a whole new level. But I watched the meeting and read the story in the paper about it, and to see that there's that kind of a focus on housing for your employees and to make, you know, a good, safe place for them to be, which will naturally help your facility and your business, right? So I was so excited to see that. Thank you for that kind of long-term thinking and planning. That's so exciting to see, and I couldn't support this project more. Thank you.
Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just kind of double-checking the map, but I think it's in Ward 2, if it's east of LaCrosse and north of the East Mall Drive. So that's in Ward 2. Hate to argue with you, but we're going to take credit for, we're going to take credit for this.
I said I think it will eventually be in Ward 4.
Maybe eventually, but, maybe eventually, but not today.
Okay, John Roberts? Okay? All right. So the motion on item 26 is for approval. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 27, first reading Ordinance 6555 and Ordinance Amending Section 17.06 of Chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by FMG Engineering for Ryan Tobin for a rezoning from general commercial district to office commercial district for property generally described as being located north of Camden Drive in east of, east Anamosa Street. And the recommendation was to send to council without recommendation as the Planning Commission deadlocked on the item. So, Jason Solomon.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will kick it off and make a motion to approve in conjunction with a planned development overlay. If I can get a second, retain the floor.
Everyone seconded?
All right, I guess I don't have to convince too much. Even Bill, all right. Well, first of all, I want to say, I watched the Planning Commission meeting on this. I really appreciated the commissioners' work on this. This was, the staff was divided, the commissioners were divided, because it's, it's really a philosophical kind of discussion, but there's, I do want to point out that I think the legitimate hesitations on this, before I get to why I voted for it. For one, there is a concern about pedestrian crossing, in particular, this location, which will be apartment complex not too far across the street from Rushmore Crossing and within walking distance to Walmart Runnings and that area. So one of the concerns is about that. I think if we can address that and have good crosswalks going across that, maybe that will help. We also talked about buffering. That's a pretty, pretty busy road nearby, and we talked about buffering in case there's kids that live in this apartment complex, and I think that's another thing to consider. But the bottom line is, all of this is just setting up the zoning. The plan for this will come down the road, and that's when it can be addressed. So I think we have to give this a fighting chance. And the reason to give it a fighting chance is because this lot has set empty for quite some time under this existing zoning. And the fact is, we know we have challenges with housing, and so if we're going to say we're going to do something about it, we have to look at this and say, this infrastructure's already there, roads, sewer, water, all that's set up, but we have yet to have anything developed there. And at some point, you just have to plan and pencil and say, well, let's, let's make adjustments here as long as it can still be safe. And so I think the need for housing in this area is significant. In particular, I think about the young airmen that are going to come into Ellsworth Air Force Base, and what a great location to be off the interstate and near the highway in case they want to jet down to work. I was one of those airmen who got a place off base. It's a significant, great place. The other thing is the access to grocery stores and employment opportunities for people who live in this area, I think, is significant. I think it's, it's worth noting. Bottom line is, I think Mr. Roberts started to allude to the fact that, you know, we have to think creatively, and I think us as a council, we have every reason to deny this based on some of the other factors, but I think for us, we need to give it a fighting chance. Let's approve it. The plan will come to us later. We can look at, make sure that some of these items are addressed, and they are seriously should be considered as part of this. We should still be responsible with our approval, but at the end of the day, I loved the arguments, thought it was great, but, but from my standpoint, I think this is worth it, and I think the housing is much needed. We can't deny it. I encourage all my colleagues to vote yes. Thank you.
John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for pointing out I was wrong earlier. I appreciate it. Anyway, I'll get back to my tirade on this one. I am so happy to see this come forward. We've needed to look outside of the box for a long time. I think one of the things that I wanted to point out to my colleagues is the qualified census tract in Rapid City, the basic boundaries on that are St. Patrick Street on the south to, to Skyline Drive, and then north along the west side of M-Hill to I-90, I-90 back down to roughly Creek Drive, Creek Drive, back down to St. Patrick Street. So it's a very limited area, and there's not a lot of vacant land in that area that isn't, like Garth said, general commercial. So, you know, it's just like another project that was mentioned that's coming in in a different area. This is going to open up lots that are a lot easier to develop, you know? And I think there's going to be a lot more opportunity for these low-income and affordable housing units to come in, because there's a huge need for them. Everybody knows that the gap is increasing, you know? It slowed down a little bit now, but, you know, between affordable housing and just market-rate housing, you know, what the average first-time buyer could afford even two years ago isn't even close to what it is today. So there's going to be more and more need going into the future for this workforce housing. And just like my colleague Jason said, you know, we're going to have a lot of airmen coming in in the next few years, and if these guys want to live off base, Ellsworth isn't planning on any new housing. So, you know, the, yeah, Box Elder is, but so far, I haven't seen any affordable housing projects out there yet. So, anyway, I think it's great for the city. I think it's great that the staff looked outside of the box. I wish, no offense to you, Garth, but I wish that you would have stood up at, at Planning Commission and talked about the qualified census tract. I think you probably could have swung one vote, and, you know, it would have been probably approved by the Planning Commission. So I hope my colleagues here will support this like I am, and we'll pass this tonight. Thank you.
Laura Armstrong.
Thank you, Mayor. The two gentlemen that went before me pretty much said what I wanted to say, but I did want to give full disclosure that Mr. Roseland and Mr. Evans and I had the opportunity to meet with Garth Wadsworth and Ryan Tobin on Friday, and I wanted to thank you not only for being here this evening, but to give us over an hour of your time to explain the work that you have. I do think it is very important to do things a little bit differently, of course, with guidelines and making sure that we do things correctly, but we have a big project that will be here before we know it, and we need to do things a little bit differently. And most importantly, we have got to learn to communicate and collaborate and as well as cooperate. So it comes down to location, 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 and it is a great place work-wise. It addresses the food desert issue, having a grocery store there. I did watch the Planning Commission meeting, and they did have some valid concerns. What has not been mentioned yet is that railroad track that has been there. So I think we might be hearing about the railroad quiet zone again, and how that will impact their quality of life. But if there's anything that we can do differently to make sure that this project comes to fruition, we need to step up and do that. Thank you.
Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to, full disclosure, I did meet with the folks from Elevate Rapid City, Garth Wadsworth and Laura Jones, so they gave me some insights as what is going to be happening with this. And then, Mr. Tobin, I'm glad you came in tonight to explain a little bit about the tax credits as well, that this project might be eligible for. And also, this is in Ward 2, so I'm glad to see this project come into fruition as well. There are some concerns, and, Mr. Mayor, if it's all right to yield the floor to our planning director, Vicky Fisher, to explain a little bit more for the layperson what this, in conjunction with planned development... this, in conjunction with plan development designation, does mean.
Vicky Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Councilwoman Nordstrom. So at Planning Commission, for those of you who didn't watch the video, this was really difficult. This was a hard decision for professional planners, and I'm telling you, staff went toe-to-toe on this one, and a lot of the discussion that you've had today was thought about, this is an area that has gone undeveloped for some time, let's get some development in here. But it is also a commercial and industrial preserved corridor. Once we allow this, we have a lot of vacant land in that area. If an adjacent lot comes in and they want to do something that's conditional, it is going to have an impact as to whether or not they can, because we are introducing residential to an area that it isn't otherwise allowed. And rest assured, loft living in a commercial area is a different housing development in its entirety than apartment development. Now, we had a development similar to this down along Omaha Campbell Street, beautifully laid out. It looked at public transportation, it looked at walkability, groceries, employment opportunities. We're not getting all of that here, but that land also is developed out, so we don't have an unknown development coming in to see, is this going to hamper me if I want to do something conditional? This is, however, something that has been left undeveloped for a lot of years. By putting it in a planned development, we can look at, where is that playground area? Do we have sufficient parking? There is no on-street parking in this area. What is the speed of that parking? How do we protect the children? How many vehicles is an average family going to have? Do they need walkability to employment? Do we need a bike path put in someplace that is not conventional? And with that planned development, we'll have the opportunity to look at that. So thank you for the motion to include it with a planned development designation.
I yield. Pat Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to thank Garth and Laura and Mr. Tobin for the hour that they gave me last Thursday. I learned an awful lot in that timeframe. I'd never heard of QCT before, and after the explanation, it made great sense to me to do this. This is a very unique area, as everyone has said, to move forward with the project, but we desperately need the housing. You may recall, a few months ago, when the group came forward and wanted to put the trailer park down along South Valley Road, I was adamantly against that, still am and believe this council made a great decision in shutting that down. For all the reasons that I was against that, this, Mr. Tobin and others with his group at Elevate have answered my questions as to the things that I had concerns about, i.e. who do we contact if there are problems? What's the plan of your company? What's the pedigree of your company? How long has it been around? Who's going to be here to take care of situations? All those things that previous groups were not able to answer to us were all brought to a successful answer for me within the one-hour timeframe, so, Mr. Tobin, I thank you for that. That helped, and the folks from Elevate, thank you very much. I believe this is going to be an exciting new project for Rapid City to do. We desperately need the housing, and I think we need to support it and move forward and see how it comes forward. Because we have such a solid planning department with Director Fisher and others, we have the safety net of knowing that each step of this is going to be thoroughly reviewed, and there, like Vicky said earlier, there'll be no surprises. Everything that comes along is going to be thoroughly reviewed, planned out, and done the right way. So we can have the confidence to step forward on something new and the safety net to know that it's going to be looked at and reviewed properly. We couldn't ask for a better place to be in this whole process, so again, I encourage the board to approve it. Thank you.
Phil Evans.
I agree exactly with what Mr. Jones said and what Ms. Armstrong said. My only concern with this is that perhaps we end up with an island surrounded of residential, surrounded by muffler shops and brick factories, and so concerning that, I hope we can empower our planning department to maybe encourage other developers to come in and create even more housing density in the lots that are, there are no proposals for, and maybe we can increase even the housing density there and expand that further to the west adjacent properties. And that, in that respect, then, we could justify perhaps pedestrian walkways and bridges and other things that, because the density may not allow it now, but in the future it might if we even increase the density more. And I found the, Mr. Tobin, to be extremely easy to communicate with and that their company is an extraordinarily high-quality group, from what I've seen and what they showed us in the slides. So I'm looking really forward to this being done, and I think it could be a great thing to that neighborhood, and like other people have mentioned, with great access to the base and other parts of town. Thank you.
The motion is for approval. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now onto community development items, item 28, a request by Puffies LLC for a conditional use permit to allow medical cannabis dispensary for property generally described as being located at 910 Main Street, and this is an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to approve.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make a motion to deny the appeal, and if I have a second, keep the floor. Based on, thank you, based on the 500-feet location from the park and the other zoning concerns that exist with it.
Let's clarify something first on the motion. The item as written looks like it would be best to approve or deny the item, not the appeal.
Yeah, that's, I wasn't sure about the wording.
Okay, so let's don't, we'll try to avoid being confused over the deal. So you would either be in favor or against approving the, approving the conditional use permit, okay? Fair enough?
Yes, thank you. So I move to deny the conditional use permit in item number 27 based on the zoning rules.
Okay, and was there a second? On 28. Okay, Richie Nordstrom makes a second. Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to support the motion to disallow this for taking place at this location. Primarily, what I'm seeing here is three reasons, and I don't recall one reason why we can't use it, and I'll go through the list that I've got, is that it's too close to a park, and I also am concerned that it is too close to a church. And the third reason, and I need some clarification why this is getting circumvented, is that it is too close to residential area. And those are the three reasons that I can't support it. However, I would like to rush to say that the folks that own Puffies run an extremely well operation, and they do a good job at the locations that I've found so far. But however, in this case, it is not in a good location. So that's the primary reasons why I will be supporting the motion, is to, hopefully we can move on from there. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go back and let Pat Jones finish.
Thank you very much, Mayor. So again, my reason for making the motion is that we follow the zoning rules that we worked very hard to come up with and approve back when all this started. This is not a negative influence or comment on the business. You know, I've had several conversations with Mr. Jeffries, and I have a lot of respect for him, but this is solely because of the zoning, and we determined some time ago where shops like this could be, where they can't be, and we had a whole slew of appeals come in, you might recall, several months ago, and we turned down, if not all of them, almost all of them, because of the zoning. So I think we need to be consistent and stay with the work that was done to determine the zones in Rapid City where these businesses can be, and stay with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Solomon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was the one who requested the church location. It's just under 1,000 feet from the medical dispensary, the church, which was my church, so I just wanted to make that clear. I will support the motion, and it has zero to do with the credibility of those bringing it forward, because I respect them, I think they do run a good operation, but they know that when we started this process, I said, "I'm just going to let the zoning do the voting," and that way, I don't play favorites. And this is me not playing favorites and supporting exactly how I voted with every one of these, that we have zones that we allowed it to go in. I approve those licenses for those green zones, and this is not in a green zone, so for me, I'm just going to say no. It's the cleanest way to do this, so that's how I'm going to vote. Just want to throw that out there. Thank you.
Phil Evans.
I have to say, I'm a little confused right now, because I think your motion flipped the way we would vote on this. I'm not, we could have just voted up or down and not had that change of motion, I think, would accomplish the same thing. But I'd like Ms. Fisher, if she would please clarify, is this out of compliance with our ordinance? Is it the building, or is it the actual business that doesn't meet the criteria? I mean, because I'm a little bit confused as to where we are on that in compliance. Thank you.
Vicky Fisher.
Thank you. So when the city council assisted staff in drafting the medical cannabis ordinance, we identified what zoning districts that the use would be permitted and/or conditional. And in the central business district, it was identified that a medical cannabis dispensary can be allowed in a permitted area, meaning that it's more than 1,000 feet from any school and 500 feet from a residential-zoned district, from a public park, a childcare center, playground. So we've got that separation. If it is still more than 1,000 feet from a school, because that's a state regulation, we can't divert from that, but it's within 500 feet of one of the others, then it's conditional. Then we have to look at it similar to a conditional use permit, you know, like apartments that would come forward requiring a public hearing. The zoning allows it, but it requires that public hearing. This would be similar. So you've got a use that's allowed in that zoning district. Now you have to look at the criteria for that conditional use permit. Is it creating additional traffic? Is it creating odor? Is it creating a safety concern? And if there are items that you believe that have not been addressed, then you cite those items and recommend to deny it, noting that it could create issues for the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Pat Roseland.
I've struggled a lot with this issue. I've been a long-term person in favor of what's happening downtown, making it a beautiful place to live and work and thrive. I've visited most of the business owners in that block more than once during this last couple of weeks, and I spent, and I listened to them really thoroughly and getting their impression of what they feel is going to happen if this dispensary comes into their neighborhood. I also spent an hour and a half with the Jeffreys. I said before, I think, it was an education of visiting with Ron and Kit. It was a beautiful presentation of what they provide or will provide for the citizens of Rapid City. You walk in there, in the front door, it's cleaner than any other doctor's office I've ever been in in Rapid City in the near future. It was really a nice, clean place, lots of cameras, lots of locked doors in between the public and the marijuana and their product. And like I said, I've been back and forth on this all the last two weeks and lost a little bit of sleep over it, but I think I'll be voting no on this as it's set up now. Thank you.
Rick Struman.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to say that this is a tough decision, and I will say, as far as the Jeffreys as an operator, I think we're fortunate in Rapid City to have them. I think we have some real professionals and people who know what they're doing and would be excellent operators, and are excellent operators already, but in this situation, because of the things that we've talked about tonight and what we've heard from the other businesses, I don't think this is an appropriate location, and in this, in this particular instance, I'm going to support the motion to deny the CUP.
John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had the privilege last week to go over and tour Puffies. I was amazed at the professionalism, the way that it was set up, the fact that the owner next door is a friend of mine, and you can't smell the marijuana in his restaurant. You know, it just, it kind of amazed me how, I thought for sure it was going to be like, you know, walking down the Las Vegas Strip, where all you smell is marijuana. I don't know if anybody's been down there in the last year or so, but, you know, it just, that's what was in my head when I went over to visit your location. It was completely the opposite. I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have an issue whatsoever if you were a neighbor of mine in a residential, or I mean, in a commercial business. So, you know, this is a hard one, the fact that four feet of your proposed location sits within, you know, the 500 feet from the park, but here's my question to you. I mean, you still have a license in one of the other locations down there. You can just go in there. I know that, you know, the reason that you came in here asking for this is because this is going to save you a lot of money by not having to go in and put sprinkler systems in the other location, and I get that. I don't, you know, I don't think, yeah, come on up, Kip, if you want to.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Kit Jeffreys with Puffies. Yeah, to answer the question, I think it was alluded towards the question, but, yeah, we hold that property at 902 Main Street. That's where our license currently exists. In the event that this doesn't pass, it's moving less than 40 feet away. It's staying exactly where it is, again, with no public comment period. That building that the license currently sits on is a 3,000-square-foot building. It does have a parking lot in the front and back of it to help address some of the parking issues. At the end of the day, the failure of recreational marijuana and lowering that square footage is a huge saver on value of the property, and then just the amount of point-of-sales that we'll need. We're not going to be opening up the Walmart of dispensaries anymore, which was our intent of that 902 Main Street location. We had, I think, like, something like close to 10 parking spaces where the traffic would have been significantly higher than any of the opponents would have probably liked with recreational marijuana passing, but at the end of the day, we got to do what we got to do. 910 has an existing sprinkler system that would save us close to $80,000 in materials and labor installing that on the 902 property, but at the end of the day, if this gets tonight, today, we're still going to be downtown 40 feet away. We're just trying to make it so that this is an opportunity for us to save a little bit of money on the deal and also reduce our square footage, as well as a bunch of other proprietary issues, but at the end of the day, that's where we're at. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Kip, and I'm glad you explained that. I just wanted the council to realize that, one way or another, this is going in really close to that location downtown. So, anyway, thank you.
Laura Armstrong.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to put on my speech pathology hat right now. I deal with a lot of people rehabilitating from brain injuries, and I know that they use medical marijuana. So let's just exchange this cannabis word with medicine. We don't want to deny somebody who needs medicine, right? I mean, there are people that go through cancer, people with anxiety, people with PTSD. You know, I don't want to disregard the people that took the time out of their evening to come down and explain their concerns, and I know that they want to protect their businesses to the person who said that, you know, just, "We're going to be just like Florida, we're just going to be like California, Las Vegas." I don't see that happening. But I do think that we have an obligation to protect, you know, the time, the energy, and the money that we put into the downtown district, and in spirit of fairness, I'm trying to find some sort of compromise, and maybe if this passes or not, maybe we can do something through legal and finance and say, maybe just medical marijuana can be within these parameters, but for rights... But for right now, that's what we're dealing with. I think the fear is, well, once this becomes recreational marijuana, if we had that in place, that might be some sort of compromise that we can do. I mean, I know a lot of people, they say that it's not because of the marijuana, but it is. And something that Mr. Jeffreys had said earlier, you said, we have dozens and dozens of malt liquor, malt beverage and liquor licenses. There are actually 35 dozen. There's 421, yeah, that we have here. That's a lot. So, let's not pick and choose, you know, let's just be good stewards, let's support business, and just maybe find a compromise. This business is gonna be here anyway, so let's just cooperate. There's my thoughts on it. Thank you.
Jesse Hamm.
Question for Director Fisher, if you wouldn't mind. This church that we speak of, is this, what are the zoning rules as we had passed? And how close is the church? And how does that pertain?
Mr. Mayor.
Vicki Fisher.
Kip Harrington ran and did a computer check on it once we heard before the meeting that there was a church that they, there was concern was within 500 feet. And Kip, either confirm it's just right under 1,000 feet?
Good evening, Kip Harrington, Long Range Planning Manager. Yes, Ms. Fisher, did a measurement on Rapid Map from the aerial photograph, measuring from the closest corners of the properties to 910 Main Street. It was just approximately 993 feet. And to the other location where they currently have their license at 902 Main Street, it was about 800 feet from the location of the church downtown.
And just as a reminder, the property has to be a minimum of 500 feet, and then the church no longer plays a legal factor in our consideration.
Okay, so, very good, that's my first question. So that's a variable that's kind of irrelevant for me. I wanted to understand what the parameters were as far as the zoning rules. So approximately 993 feet?
Give or take, I mean, a few feet here, there.
Yeah, a few feet. So there's a couple presumptions that I won't entertain, really. One of the presumptions is that recreational marijuana will or will not be a factor. I'm not gonna take that into account today, because I don't know. What I do know is that I wasn't here for, but I will regard the zoning rules that were agreed upon. I mean, I talked about this with Mr. Jeffreys, and my initial impression was, well, if that's the only variable, well, there was other variables, there are other people involved, and a fair number of them. And I, like everybody else here has referenced, these are good business people. These guys are respectable folks, and I don't want them to leave. That's not at all my intention here. And the $80,000 difference, given the fact that that law statewide changed things, I think you guys are in a little tight spot for a while. My hunch, though, is I agree with Ms. Armstrong in saying that this is a variable. I had a daughter with cancer a couple of years ago, and I went to Denver, and I found some friends who would allow us to utilize their facility and help her out. So, there's some upside to this for the community in specific situations. By the way, neuropathy's very uncomfortable, and we tried it out. Didn't really actually help her, I'm sorry, but I can see where there's definite need and use for that. It's a lot, probably overplayed a lot as far as the downside risk there. All that said, even though it's not the Walmart of dispensaries, I think this'll probably be a good lucrative business and probably bring good people downtown. And I don't see it being a negative thing, but my vote is gonna be to let the Walmart proceed and probably not. Though I say, as the motion is concerned, I would say I would approve the motion that's been set for place in order. Thank you.
Bill Evans.
I need to have a little more clarification from Ms. Fisher, if I could. Do you recall, did the 902 location have to have the same conditional approval that we're voting for right now?
No, it is outside of that 500-foot dimension to anything, so it's permitted. It just required a building permit.
And is the entire building within 500 feet, or is it just the business, or the corner of the building, or is it all included in that?
There is a corner of the property that sets about 40 feet into that 500-foot dimension, pardon, 40 feet into that 500-foot radius measurement. So, beyond that, Kip, could you confirm?
Can I use some audiovisual to help?
Mr. Mayor.
Is that acceptable? Thank you. So I prepared this map earlier today. This shows the downtown area. The current location of 902 Main Street is located here in green. The proposed conditional use permit is located here in yellow. I also located the federal building and Halle Park on there for your reference. And so the federal building really doesn't have any jurisdiction on this. However, Halle Park is the contributing factor, as it is not only a city park, it is also a zone, Park Forest, which is a residential zone district. And that 500-foot buffer cuts right across that corner, and I don't believe it's 40 feet, I think it's closer to four feet on that measurement.
And where in that yellow building, that outline, is this dispensary gonna be located?
The dispensary is located in the front of the building, and that's, so that would be a corner of the proposed dispensary.
So it's on that west side of it, not the east side of the building?
I believe that's true. We may have Mr. Jeffreys confirm that.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Kit Jeffreys with Puffy's. If I'm just to point at the map here, it would be basically split right here, and it'd be this front half, thanks.
Okay, so it's the entire storefront?
Yep, it'd be the front half there.
That's it. Kate, Jason Solomon.
Thank you. You know, I appreciated the discussion tonight. I did wanna chime in and say, you know, we're really not debating the legitimacy of medical marijuana. The voters put that in, and this council approved 15 licenses. So, when we talk about people being able to use that and using that as the emotional appeal, that will still happen. There will be 15 locations, no matter what. The question for us is whether we wanna be, you know, real conservative with this, with the zoning rules, or whether, you know, we wanna, you know, make some little exceptions. And just for my case, I just wanted to draw a hard line. And I was, I've been upfront from the beginning when we initially voted on the various locations until now. So, this vote is really not about the legitimacy or not of medical marijuana. The voters decided that, this council has decided that on the 15 licenses, that's done. The question is whether, you know, we wanna allow exceptions or not. And so if you do it for this, you have set a precedent for yourself that that's probably something you have to consider down the road. So, and for my mind, for my vote, it's the only one I can control, just trying to be consistent and make sure that, you know, we're, everybody knows the rules and move forward that way. So, wanted to throw that out there. We're not debating medical marijuana, we're just debating locations. Thank you.
I just have a quick question for Director Fisher, if that's okay?
Yes.
Director Fisher, I just wanted to clarify that the planning commission did approve this?
That is correct.
And do you happen to know that vote?
Believe it was unanimous. There was one dissenting, one. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for that.
Matt Roseland.
I feel like we're winning or losing here tonight. I feel like those who live in the 900, or work in 900 block of West, of Main Street in 910 Building will probably come out as winners. They won't have marijuana dispensary in their building, which I think the concern was very high in their eyes. And yet, hopefully, Kit and Ron will find a positive in 902 Main Street if that works out for them. Really, it's becoming a rock and a hard spot. There's still gonna be a marijuana dispensary in that block, although it won't be in the building that initially wanted to go. And so hopefully, I feel like we're all winners here. And I know it's gonna be a lot more expensive to get started in 902 Main Street, but I'm sure that you'll have a first-rate medical dispensary there. And I applaud you, and I wish you all the best. Thank you.
Okay, the motion for item 28 is to deny the conditional use permit, and we'll go to a roll call for this vote. An "aye" vote approves the conditional use permit, and a "no" vote denies it. Oh. Just listen to the item one more time. A request by Puffy's LLC for a conditional use permit to allow a medical cannabis dispensary. That's what we're voting on. A motion to deny. You guys, right in the beginning, I said, the way this is worded, let's vote on the request for a conditional use permit, not on the appeal, so that we wouldn't confuse it. And now we just confused it anyway. The motion was to, well, that didn't help.
Mr. Mayor, my notes show that the motion was made to deny the conditional use permit, because there's always a confusion whether we uphold the appeal or deny the appeal. So you did great clarifying, let's just go straight to the conditional use permit. And the motion in the second was to deny the conditional use permit.
Let's take the easy way here. I think, we're gonna have to take a recess, aren't we, to get recovered from this?
No, I think that everyone other than you is on the same page, that if you vote "aye", it is in support of the motion to deny the conditional use permit. The original, you were correct, the original motion to deny the appeal was not the intent, because that, the appeal was of the approval. So if you deny the appeal, it would've approved it. So it was good to clarify it, but I think everyone understands now, a vote, a vote "aye" denies the conditional use.
Because the motion is to deny the conditional use permit.
Correct.
Okay, just one more time. If you, the motion is to deny the conditional use permit. If you vote for that motion, it denies the conditional use. If you vote "no," then that will allow the conditional use permit.
Well, that, there'll have to be another motion to, just, let's get through the first vote.
Are we getting paid by the hour here?
I think the first vote will resolve it.
Okay. The motion is to deny the conditional use permit. Roll call, please. Good luck.
Aye.
Roberts.
Aye.
Hamm.
Aye.
Nordstrom.
Aye.
Roseland.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Solomon.
Aye.
Lehman.
No.
Jones.
Aye.
Motion passes to deny, seven to three.
Okay, clear as mud. Sorry about that, everybody. Okay, we're done with item 28. Thank you all for being here. Item 29. A request by KTM Design Solutions for John and Lancine Ziegler for a preliminary subdivision plan for proposed lots 1 and 2 of Jay-Z Estates, generally described as being located north of Carstens Drive, east of Roland Drive, and west of Wallace Street. The recommendation is to approve with stipulations. We have that motion by Nordstrom, and second by Evans, to approve with stipulations. All in favor of that motion, say "aye."
Aye.
Opposed, say "no." Motion carries. Item 30. A request by KTM Design Solutions for Yasmin Dream 2 LLC for a preliminary subdivision plan for proposed Lot 1 and Lot 2 of Block 5 of Diamond Ridge Subdivision, generally described as being located south of the intersection of Diamond Ridge Boulevard and Cadillac Drive. And again, the recommendation is to approve with stipulations.
No approval with stipulation.
Okay, we have that motion by Pat Jones, and a second by John Roberts. All in favor of that motion, say "aye."
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 31. A request by KTM Design Solutions for Black Hills Federal Credit Union for a preliminary subdivision plan for proposed lots A and B of Lot 1 of Block 2 of Minnesota Subdivision, generally described as being located at 111 Minnesota Street, and the recommendation is to approve with stipulations. Jason Solomon makes the motion to approve a stipulation, second by Jesse Hamm. All in favor of that motion, say "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 32 is to approve the following list, which is attached, of the 2023 alcoholic beverage license renewals, which have been vetted and approved by the Rapid City Police Department and the Rapid City Fire Department. Motion to approve by Lehman, second by Roberts. All in favor of approval, say "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing item 33. There are no speakers for item 33, so we'll go to non-consent public hearing items, non-consent public hearing items, item 33. Approve Resolution 2022-088. A resolution authorizing an application for financial assistance for solid waste, authorizing the execution and submittal of the application, and designating an authorized representative to certify and sign payment request. And we'll have a presentation by Dale Tek.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess, the first order of business, I would like you to keep the public comment period open for this public hearing item.
Okay.
I think that was the intent of what you talked about earlier when you opened public comment on this. But we certainly want the record to reflect that the public comment portion of this hearing was left open for this presentation and for the item. And with that, I'll introduce John Leahy. He's an operations, I'm sorry, project manager with City Rapid City, and he is going to have a brief presentation for you tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Tek, and good evening, Mayor, Council. The purpose of this hearing is to present an upcoming project at the landfill. It includes a cell construction and some additions and upgrades to the landfill gas collection system out there. The hearing is a requirement of the State Revolving Fund Loan Program, which is the proposed method of funding this project. There are a few specific items that we need to cover in order to, as requirements of that, and that's part of the presentation. And at the end, there's a request for public comment and questions. So with that, I'll introduce the rest of our project team. Jason Hines is with FMG Engineering. Will be talking about the actual project itself, and some of the technical details and impact on rates. And Jennifer Sitzma with Black Hills Council of Local Governments will discuss the SRF program and interest rates and loan terms. So with that, I will turn the presentation over to Mr. Hines.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll try to keep the technical portion short and sweet, because we're getting kinda yawny and late here. So, yep. So a little bit-
So a little bit, I'm Jason Hines with FMG Engineering. We are the design consultant doing the engineering design of the project and helping with the funding application. As John mentioned, this project consists of new construction or construction of a new landfill cell, landfill gas well installation in some existing cells, and installation and construction of a new flare, new landfill gas flare. A little bit here on the slide on the project need. This is pretty typical landfill operations. All of these components have been programmed into the progression planning of the landfill. The new cell is needed because the current landfill cell has approximately 24 months projected remaining, so it's becoming near full. So it's time to initiate and open a new landfill cell. The gas system needs to be expanded into two existing cells. Those are regulatory requirements that dictate cells with solid waste get gas collection and gas capture wells. So that's part of the project. And then with the new well system or the expansion of the well system, the existing flare needs to be upgraded to meet that added gas flow. Additionally, as everybody's pretty well aware, there's some unique funding opportunities with federal and state funding programs that allow for the application of this funding package to make it some attractive funding opportunities for the city to capitalize on. So... Okay, a little bit about the maps here. The map on the left, they're both outlines of the Rapid City landfill facility and property. The map on the left, north is up-left, and Catron Boulevard can be seen on the left side of the page, Highway 79 on the top. We switched it just to switch things up a bit. North is up on the right image, but it's essentially the same footprint. Some project, some discussion of some project alternatives. As with any project, design project, alternatives are reviewed and analyzed for cost and benefits. But specifically for this funding package, we have to present some alternatives at the public hearing and with the funding application. There, because this is a landfill federally and state regulated, there wasn't a lot of alternatives, but we did review some alternatives. The do-nothing alternative is required by the funding package. That was quickly ruled out as cost prohibitive and not feasible to not construct a new cell and essentially stop collecting waste from the landfill service area. We looked at some alternate cell sequencing. I guess I should jump back up to the pink map on the left. The pink boundaries are the permitted cells at the Rapid City landfill. The hatch, the pink hatched areas are the cells that have been filled and closed. The yellow lines, which are a little tough to see, are the current active cells. So the last two boxes you see are the two unactivated or unconstructed remaining cells. The blue cell, Cell 15, is the chosen alternative for the new landfill cell. We also looked at some alternative liner options, clay liners versus composite liners. And the chosen option was a synthetic plastic liner for the new cell. The areas on the right, we'll get into it in the next slide, but that's the landfill gas expansion project shown on the right slide. Those two pictures are shown here again in a little bit more detail on these specific components. As I mentioned, the preferred option or the chosen option for the cell construction would be Cell 15. It'd be in the southwest corner of the landfill, shown as number one here in blue. And then on the right, we see the expansion of the gas collection system and the new well fields indicated in Items 2 or shown as Box 2. And then the new flare in the area 3 there with the associated engineering cost estimates shown in the table, arriving at a total estimated project cost with contingencies of $12 million. Now, discussion of the revenue source pledged in effect on user rates. These projects were plugged into the recent rate study completed and are included in the current adopted rate structure. So at this time, the model indicates no additional rate increases are anticipated other than what has been presented and adopted in the resolution passed last year and shown on the slide here. That ends my portion, and Jennifer will discuss some of the financing.
Good evening, council members and mayor. Jennifer Sitzma with Black Hills Council of Local Governments. For people who might be listening, the council assists with technical assistance for federal and state funding, and that's our purpose for being here this evening. There's, as they mentioned in the previous slide, a $12 million total project cost with $100,000 of local cash being proposed for this project, leaving $11.9 million for financing or funding. To achieve that, we're looking at two different programs through the Department of Ag and Natural Resources. The first one is the Clean Water State Revolving Loan Fund. That is a loan fund, but there is also sometimes opportunity for principal forgiveness loan. And then the other program is the Solid Waste Management Program, which is both loan and grant. Due to the size of your project, there is a need to consider both of these funding programs to fund your project. So application submittals for this project will be submitted by January 1 of 2023 with a funding decision. It's typically the last Thursday in March, which is the Board and Water Natural Resources meeting, the first quarter of 2023. The, any loan for this project would be a rate of 3% for 20 years. And that is really the only option for this project that is set by Department of Ag and Natural Resources. Okay, I guess that's the end of what I gotta do. I'm filling in for Bill Lass tonight. So there is a requirement of the program to call for public comments and to offer an opportunity for the public to comment. So if there aren't any questions for me or the rest of the group from the council, you can certainly do that now.
Okay, first of all, are there any members of the public that would like to speak on this item? Okay, we'll go to Pat Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. Two questions. Would, who would the city be borrowing the money from? This $11 million or whatever it was at 3%?
The Clean Water SRF loan program is through the Department of Ag and Natural Resources. Their funds actually come from a federal program, but it loses its federal identity. So it actually comes from EPA at the federal level. Does that answer your question?
Kind of. We would be borrowing directly from the state? That's who we would be on the hook to?
Yes, your agreement would be with Department of Ag and Natural Resources? It'd be a similar program to what you did for your water reclamation fund?
Okay, thank you. And then my next question is, the first map that was up there that showed the growth of service both in-town customers and out-of-town, could that be put back up there? And I'd like to ask a question about that, please.
This guy?
This, this one, yes. So the blue is Rapid City population and the burnt pumpkin is non-city population, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so is it costing the taxpayers of Rapid City to service non-Rapid City customers? And why do we service them? And do we have an obligation to continue servicing them if it's causing these cells to fill up more quickly?
Thank you, Assistant Public Works Director Stacy Titus. The rates are, if you recall, we do a cost of service analysis, and the rates have to be fair and equitable for all customers. So part of what we've done is to level to make sure that the citizens of Rapid City are paying their fair share, but so are the outside regional entities that are using the solid waste facility are paying their fair share. So there's a tipping fee, and then there's a residential collection fee. The tipping fee, which is everybody pays, the disposal cost. So to keep, short answer, it's fair for everybody.
Do we have to provide services to other customers in the city of Rapid City?
That would be a policy decision. The way the landfill currently operates, it's a regional facility, and that is how we're permitted to provide service for not only the city of Rapid City, but the regional area.
But we are subsidizing, are we not, services for people outside the city of Rapid City by having them pay the same price as our citizens?
The people that are using it from outside the city are paying the same tipping fee as the residents in town, so everybody pays the same disposal fee. The residents have a collection fee, which is the transport of the trucks to pick up the garbage.
But it's fair to say that it's filling up faster because of outside use from, other than the city of Rapid City, correct?
Yes, the tonnage rate has historically been increasing over the last few years.
Can we go back to that slide that had that on there, please? It's, I think it's the one right before this.
There you go.
Right. So if it was just the city of Rapid City using the city of Rapid City landfill, then we would have much less concern about the growth and more cells and borrowing money. But we are also allowing outside use. So my question is, why, I feel like we're subsidizing the use for everyone who's using it rather than the city of Rapid City paying one price and, because they're the taxpayers who live here, and the others, you know, that don't live here, paying, you know, a different price? I mean, educate me as onto the why we do what we do. I see what we're doing. Tell me why we do it, please.
This slide right here, if you look at the bottom, the landfill rates for mixed waste garbage per ton, those rates are the $61, $61, $63. That is the disposal cost. That is charged equitably to all customers inside the city and outside the city. So that tonnage cost is the same. If that answers your question.
I think I hear the question as, isn't the landfill filling up faster because it's a regional facility?
Yeah, in response to that, we are permitted as a regional facility. That's the name on the door, Rapid City Regional Landfill. So through the state of South Dakota and the Clean Water Act and all of the other environmental requirements that we have, Rapid City, when it was organized back in the 1960s for this particular location, was permitted to take waste from the region. And Stacy had alluded to the fact that, well, that's a policy decision if you want to change that. I would not recommend going down that road at this time because if we prohibited other users in the area from properly disposing of their waste, lord knows where it'll go. To the point of, as far as outside people paying the same as the people inside the city of Rapid City, for instance, a residential customer just outside of Rapid City that has private service pays nearly double what city residents pay for disposal of their waste. So the actual disposal of the waste in the landfill cell is evenly distributed, fairly distributed, rather. But as far as the collection is concerned, that's a whole nother issue. And no, the citizens of Rapid City are not subsidizing outside customers.
Bill Evans.
I have a question concerning the clay or composite liners. What are the advantages and disadvantages to either/or?
Sorry, what was the question again?
Well, I see that there's a choice not made yet, clay or composite liner.
Clay versus composite liner.
What exactly is the difference? And is there advantages to one over the other?
Yeah, one of the big advantages, the clay liner is much thicker, eating up a significant amount of airspace. As everybody's alluding to, airspace at this landfill has been determined to be very valuable. So when you take that cubic yard volume and throw it away because you have to eat it up in your liner airspace, the cost benefit, it's much more economical to install a thin plastic liner versus like a four-foot soil liner. And then you have to come up with the volume of usable, really good, low permeability clay from somewhere as well, so.
Are there ecological advantages to the clay over the composite liner or not really?
What studies have shown is the, not really. The composite liners are much less permeable, much more effective at keeping hazardous materials out of the groundwater.
And the other question I had concerns the flare. There's a lot of cost in installing that system. Now, I'm assuming that's not just the little pipe that pukes a flame every night, but it's all the stuff that collects all of it?
Yeah, the dot is a bit misleading, but there's a blower, skid, all different electrical and piping components, upsizing of piping coming in. And it's not just the flare, it's the flare system.
Well, and I was curious, we're still not somehow utilizing that burn-off to generate any kind of energy, or do we use any of it to do that?
John can probably speak to it. There is multiple buildings at the landfill that are heated using landfill gas. So they do use it internally, but it's not exported or sold off-site.
Have we explored the option, maybe trapping all of it rather than burning it off?
There are some different options that can be looked at separately. The base component of any of those options is the gas collection system with the flare. So this is kind of the basic building block that has to be in place before we can look at any of those other options.
The only reason I ask that question is because, you know, a former employee that has a lot of expertise in this area keeps in my ear saying, why aren't we doing that? And so I feel the need to ask a question. We should keep exploring that. I know that it's very unpopular right now to be sending that kind of stuff into the atmosphere. So anything we can do to lessen the impact is a good thing. So we need to keep exploring that. Thank you.
Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of comments for you folks. And the first question is that the production of this Cell 15 or the construction of this Cell 15 is roughly $12 million. What is the life of this cell, anticipated to be life?
The actual construction of the cell is five, five and a half million, or roughly five and a half million. The landfill gas system expansion makes up the balance of that. And the life of the cell is probably, is around approximately four to five years is what we're anticipating.
Four to five years. Thank you. And then what, the reason I'm asking this is because the life of the landfill is something that we need to take a look at in the near future. And are we gonna need additional space? Are we gonna need a new location? Those type of questions in the future. And then you folks are probably way ahead of me on this, but when you're talking about the grants from the EPA, I was just listening to a webinar today about grant applications and the, I forget the acronym, but it's a notice of information for grants coming up that are very, that are just coming out any day now. I forget exactly what time it is. But do you, do you have that information available to you? And I'm looking to Ms. Sitzma.
We do, we are in the list, and we do get the notice of funding opportunity from all of the federal programs. So most often, though, we rely on those programs that are administered. that are administered through the state because of, they are much less clunky to use, so.
Yes. And then I presume you're familiar with the, the grants coming from the EPA out of the BIL, which is the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law?
We are following, and we get the same emails, like we're on the same list you are, I believe. So a lot of those are going, well, there's two ways that those are being administered. Some of them are going through existing programs, like the Clean Water SRF program that we're already looking at. And then the others are, they, they have to wait for the program rules to be designed, so.
Understand, yeah. And this, it looks promising. And, and from what I've heard from these webinars, it looks like we may be eligible to apply for those grants. So looking forward to that opportunity. And thank you for a reminder of what that acronym stands for. Thank you. I yield.
Jesse Ham.
Couple of questions. I was, I can identify with Mr. Jones's concerns regarding the equity of whether those who are not city taxpayers and those who, who aren't. But I'll, I'll address that outside of here because it doesn't pertain to the, the questions in, in this particular twelve million dollar process. What is the brief list of contingencies that are included in the seventeen percent?
Really, the volatility in this market. Landfill gas flares aren't very readily available. And then composite liners are plastics and some petroleum-based products and some other things that are seen very, anywhere from twenty to thirty percent increases in the last year. So it's trying to pin that down, the funding timeline and when this will actually bid and when these items will get procured. So it's, we typically at this stage would carry some level of contingency. This is a lot, a little higher than normal because of the volatility in the market.
Okay, makes sense. I yield, thank you.
Okay, thanks for the presentation. I believe, okay, we have a motion to approve by Lehman. Second by Roberts. All in favor of approval of item thirty-three, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The bill list, item thirty-four, we'll go to Tracy Davis.
There are no additions to the bill list, so the amount presented is eight million, four hundred ninety-three thousand, six hundred eighty-four dollars and thirty-two cents.
Motion approved, Solomon. Second by Jones. All in favor of the bill list, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Lehman. Ham, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, no.